This is our special meeting with Panhandle Health District. It is May 4, 2023. The time is 9:00 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. It attends our Commissioners Brooks, Matarri, and Duncan. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none. We'll get right down to our one discussion item, and that's the fiscal year '24 Panhandle Health District budget request with Director Don Duffy from Panhandle Health, and Christine Crummer, and Jason Peppin. Sorry. Okay. Thanks. Go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Commissioners. We really appreciate you giving us your time. You're welcome for us today.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just have to push up in. There you go.
Forget that every time. Thank you again. Once again, thank you for having us here today for the opportunity for us to present our FY '24 budget. Just a reminder on the process. Obviously, there's no action item to vote on today. We are simply presenting the budget to you. We are currently visiting with Commissioners in all five counties just to present the budget. The budget decision is made at a budget hearing on May 25, and that is held at Panhandle Health District, and that will be at 11 o'clock. The Chair of the Commissioners is the one invited to that, so the Chair from each one of the five counties will come and vote on the budget. And Commissioner Duncan, that is, of course, you, unless you wish to delegate that responsibility, but it must be a county Commissioner that you delegate that to. So looking forward to that. Again, that's May 25 at 11 o'clock at Panhandle Health District. And we will go through the budget today. Any questions, of course, are welcome. Or if you have questions prior to May 25, do not hesitate, please, to give us a call. The first thing I'd like to do is to review briefly our 2022 annual report to give you an idea of some of the accomplishments that happened, has happened in that, and that is a calendar year. If you turn to the second page under Director's Statement, you'll see that what we feel is we live, I've just briefly listed some of our major accomplishments. And number one is really had a lot to do with Cootney County in helping us to preserve the five-acre rule here within Cootney County. And we're just so appreciative to all of you for supporting that process. Really, you're the ones that made that happen. And working closely with planning and zoning and our relationship with them is clearly what I look at as Director as our major accomplishment that has happened in 2022. Certainly, the work that we're doing in opioid use disorder, our tremendous growth we've seen in our WIC program and other, we would consider our major accomplishments. If we turn a couple of pages, just to give a, again, just so we understand, we're clear on the structure here. We can see that I, as there's the District Director, and I report directly to the Board of Health, which is made up of either county Commissioners or representatives. So it really is true that the Health District is governed by our county Commissioners and then our four separate programs that we have. And we'll talk more about those in just a minute. If we turn to the next page, which is our financial highlight, this is always interesting to people in the public to give them a perspective on how, where our funding comes from. The counties do not support 100% of what we do. Most of we get, most of our money comes from state and federal contracts and grants. For example, the Women's Infants and Children Program is around a $700,000 grant that comes from the Department of Agriculture, and there's multiple other grants that we, we get to make up 44% of our budget. The other is 36% comes from fees that we charge to the citizens of Cootney County and other counties, and that's things like septic tank approvals or permit fees. It's fees that are collected in our clinics, et cetera. So county support boils down to 19% of our budget. And that number is the one that we're going to be discussing today. We're proud of the fact that that's the lowest percentage of any other health, of the seven other health districts in the state, considerably lower. And we continue to drive that number down as best that we possibly can. And so you'll see a budget today of roughly $13 million. That 19% represents about $2.5 million distributed amongst the five northern counties. And we're asking for the same amount this year. Now, that's just a little bit from county to county based on population valuation, but the overall ask this year is the same. And that includes throwing in a 4% salary increase for our staff beginning July 1. That's not much in light of inflation. In fact, inflation will eat up that. And, but we were continually striving to be competitive with our staff. If we turn a couple of pages, and this, this is very interesting to me. We're going to go through briefly each. This is not inclusive of all of our programs, but a majority of them. Where we go through and we see how many of your citizens are touching Panhandle Health District. In 2022, the citizens of the five northern counties utilized Panhandle Health District over 28,000 times in one year, the vast majority of that happening here in Cootney County. So you can kind of get a list here and show how your county took advantage of our services. We issued 680 septic permits. We did 960 food inspections, 119 childcare inspections. We monitored and reviewed 82 public water systems, and just to name a few. If we turn the page, this is just some things that I'm just so proud of what we do. For example, under Cootney County, our Nurse Family Partnership and Parents as Teachers Program, where we go into young moms, either a social worker or, or a like-minded individual or a registered nurse is in the homes of these new moms. And as you can see, that number was over 1,000 folks that we're dealing with in, just in your community alone in helping them through that difficult project, process. Many of them, just imagine this for a minute. It could be a 17-year-old who delivers a baby and has no support whatsoever. The hospital, they're discharged, they have nothing. And that's when our RNs step in at no charge to them, to be with them from, from before the baby is delivered until that child is age two with monthly visits from a registered nurse to help them through that process. You could, I think, appreciate the foundation that it provides for that young family. Just one of the many programs that we offer. As I mentioned about our WIC program, it's been on a growth mode. There was nearly 3,400 visits from young families getting nutritional support and just others. You know, we have, we turn the page.
Director, I have a question.
Please, please.
On your Nurse Family Partnership and your Parents as Teachers, ours, do some people take advantage of both programs?
Good question. So the Nurse Family Partnership, they'll move into that. When that child is two, they must be discharged from the NFP program. So we, that's why we brought on Parents as Teachers, is we can then take them beyond that if they wish to.
So essentially, 300 of those 795 could have actually moved on.
Possibly. Absolutely. If we turn to our health services, an area that we, you know, I mean, it, it really is from newborns to our senior population. We have services that are addressing all of those demographics. Is our Senior Companion Program. You know, we have 65 seniors shut-ins in this community that our volunteers are visiting. There's a lot more that would like to participate. Our challenge is finding more volunteers to help us. We have 15 sites in Cootney County, separate sites for our Fit and Fall Program, where citizens come for exercise training and strengthening to prevent them from falling and incurring costs from that. And there's, which I think is just very valuable. I also added on the next page, this is an area that's growing dramatically, as you so well know, in our Health District, and that's the work we do with opioid use disorder, whether it's prevention or treatment or education. For example, we distributed over 1,100 Detera pouches. These are pouches that individuals can safely use to safely dispose of their drugs. We gave out 736 med boxes. These are folks that can take them to properly lock up their drugs. We've installed 76 naloxone boxes throughout the community where if there is an opioid overdose, someone could easily access naloxone and save a person's life. So many wonderful programs there. And finally, our clinical services. We have, of course, an office here in Cootney County, and we had 5,442 visits that came through our clinics. We still see roughly an 8% of our population is still uninsured, even with Medicaid expansion, and we're there to assist them. Finally, we investigated 1,119 diseases here. You know, ranging, there's 70 reportable diseases in the state of Idaho. One of the concerns we have is the rise in sexually transmitted disease in this community and throughout the country. Syphilis unfortunately has been a significant rise over the last couple of years, as we learn when we do those investigations. So I just wanted you to see all of those. Any questions? I went through that rather quickly that any of you have.
Okay. Questions?
Nope.
Okay.
So with that, Commissioner, I will turn time over to Christine Crummer to provide a review of our FY '24 budget.
Good morning. On your presentation, if we look at page two, we'll start with a refresher of the county funding, the cost of maintenance of the district in statute. 70% of.
I'm sorry. I don't think I have one of those. Is that?
Oh, that's why I have two.
I was wondering where the numbers were. Okay. Thank you.
Page two. So in statute, it states that 70% of the maintenance of the Health District will be based on population, and 30% is based on taxable market value. We'll see how that calculation plays in and a few pages back. Next page, page three, is the fiscal year '24 budget compared to fiscal year '23's. As Don mentioned, there is no increase in the overall county ask. Total county ask is $2,496,900. What I would like to do in reviewing this worksheet is start at the bottom, look at the revenues, and then move through the revenues up through the expenditures. So starting with reserves, use of program advances, we've budgeted $850,000 for fiscal year '24, significantly higher over prior year. The reason for that would be the opioid funding that we received in fiscal year '23. Program advances represent those funds received in fiscal year '23 that will be used in fiscal year '24. And there is approximately $760,000 of that $846 budgeted in opioid use funding. License and fees, this would be environmental, $1.86 million. It's down, decreased over 12%. And we did budget less than prior year based on what we're currently seeing in fiscal year '23 activity. Health services, budgeted $1,365,000. That is down $1.2 million. The reason for that is in early fiscal year '23, we closed the Home Health Agency. Also, clinical services are down. So we've decreased our budget for clinical services. That's represented in that decrease of $1.2 million. Contracts and grants, the $6.258 million is an increase of $540,000 over prior year. And what that primarily represents is a new grant, an infrastructure grant. And for fiscal year '24, we just received this information last Thursday, a final number, that, that, that grant will be $442,000. And what the infrastructure grant is, it's, it's a grant that resulted in new federal funding as a result of the pandemic. And it was determined nationally that there were weaknesses in the public health system. And this funding is intended to help meet critical infrastructure needs. And it's pretty open on how that can be used. It can be used for IT infrastructure. It can be used for developing your workforce, for IT management systems. And early on in the spring, before we knew the absolute details, we developed our wish list based on what we knew at the time. And in this budget, what we have included is, is two FTEs. And we've included two FTEs for potentially a Grants Compliance Officer and a HIPAA Privacy Security Officer. Also, in overhead, there is, and we're not exactly sure if we will be using these as employees or as consultants. Excuse me. There's the potential for a suicide prevention support individual as well, and assistance with the Community Health Assessment, a Community Health Assessment Coordinator. So those were some of the items that, from a personnel or consultant standpoint, that we included in the budget under the infrastructure grant. Donations and others, other miscellaneous revenue, that's a decrease, and that was simply decreased based on activity that we're seeing in fiscal year '23. Interest revenue. This was, this was interesting to, to budget. So I believe I was very conservative, and I would be, prefer to be conservative in this estimate. I simply increased it by approximately $75,000. At the beginning of fiscal year '23, interest was incredibly low. Now it's over 4%. So I, I took a bit of the middle, middle of the road here. So we'll see, as we go through fiscal year '24, how that turns out for variance. If we look at our expenditures, our salary and wages. Now, keep in mind, we, we did close Home Health, so that has kind of skewed some of our, our variances here. In fiscal year '23, we had a budget of 119.4 FTEs, removing Home Health, and keep in mind, a few individuals remained. That was reduced to adjusted for, down to 109 FTEs. For fiscal year '24, we're budgeting 112.6 FTEs, a change of 3.66. And I, as I just mentioned, two of those individuals are in the infrastructure grant, and then another individual would be for the opioid use grant. So overall, salary and wages is down $278,000. But as Don mentioned, we've included a 4% salary increase. And that salary increase represents approximately $246,000. In our employee benefits, again, keep in mind the, the shift in FTEs due to Home Health. The one thing that, that is impacting our employee benefits this year is the increase in health insurance. So insurance is going up approximately $2,100 per individual. It's being budgeted at $13,750 this year compared to $11,650 last year. And that is approximately a $235,000 increase. Total operating, operating expenditures, nothing significantly different other than what we have included for the infrastructure grant. We've budgeted at, in certain categories, a 5% increase. A fair amount of our operating expenditures are fixed by contract, such as lawn maintenance, snow removal, that type of thing. So they were budgeted based on actual amounts stated in those contracts. Total capital expenditures, an increase of $31,000 over prior year. So what we've included in capital expenditures this year is the $286,000 for the principal payments on the Hayden facility. And then the remaining $156,000 represents two vehicles estimated at about $28,000 each. And then the balance is going into maintenance and security systems in both the Hayden, Hayden office and the outlying offices. Several years ago, we did put in a security system in the Hayden office. We still need to complete that project, not at the same level, at both the Bonner's Ferry Office and Kellogg Office. Do I, yes, Kellogg Office. So that has been included in the budget as well. And then several of the buildings need some general maintenance, which has also been included in the budget. So overall change from one budget year to the next budget year, fiscal year '24 to '23, the overall budget is a decrease of $50,000. Any questions?
Yeah, the trustee payments.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. The trustee payments. What trustee payments represent is, those are payments that we pass on to potentially community partners. If we have a grant and we have awarded a subgrant to a community partner, those payments will be made through trustee payments. It's passing on federal dollars to another entity. So it doesn't hit and is not reflected in our operating expense.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So you're just offsetting what your contracts and grants dollars are? Is that how that works?
It would be an expenditure out of the contracts and grants, yes.
So you're offsetting it?
Yes. So some of it would be coming out of or be posted to trustee benefits, and others would be, the other, the other grant expenditures would be in your personal cost and some in your operating expense cost.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? So the next page is the pie chart for this current budget. Keep in mind what Don was referencing in his percentages in the annual report. That information fiscal year '22 would have also included some COVID in there. So this doesn't include any COVID. So there's, and it also does not include Home Health. So that's going to change some of the percentages there. If we go to the change in statistics page, this is where we see the population and the valuation come into play and the calculation for each county's cost of maintenance to the Health District. I'm going to focus mainly on the far right, the change column. We can see that the population changed in Cootney County by 3,800 or 2%, an increase. The valuation increased by $19,370,000, a 71% increase. And at the base of the page, you will find the source of this information. Now, if we look at the next page, we will take those percentages, the 67% for population and the 69% for valuation, and apply that to the county ask of $2,496,000. So using the calculation formula, in total, and if we look at the lower left-hand corner of the spreadsheet, in total, the fiscal year '24 ask for Cootney County is $1,696,345. It's an increase of $10,799. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So that concludes the budget presentation.
Well, I do have a question, but I'm not so sure it's related to the budgets at all, really. Because when you make a big change in staff, and that seems like that's where a big part of your, your savings is, do you foresee any kind of bounce back up at all in the future? Because you really were able, you know, to trim a lot of money off your expenses based upon closing that home program, Home Health program?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Great question. You know, the Home Health Program, when we closed that program, I just want to reiterate, when we did, all of those patients were found at other sources. So no one was left out in the cold. We made sure we did that before we made that final decision. But we don't see us bringing back Home Health. It would need to be a significant program that would come back, that would need to be supported by significant funding for us to do that. So I find that to be unlikely. I say that with a little hesitancy because I'm still, we are still not sure exactly where this, these opioid settlement funds are going to land. We understand that there still could be some additional settlements, and money does flow in from those to the Health District as well as to all of our counties and some of our cities. So that's the only one out there that I see that could have any sort of a significant bump up in terms of hiring more staff. But it wouldn't be. I could not even imagine that it would be the same bump as the employees that we lost by closing Home Health.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any programs that you could stop providing without affecting the revenue? The grants and contracts? Or they all?
Yes, yes, we do. You know, we have, we have some smaller programs. We have a, what we call our PLAY Program, which is Parents Leading Active Youth. It's a childhood obesity program. More recently, it started prior to the pandemic. Basically, it closed during the pandemic, and we're restarting that. There are, there is only a small part of another grant that we use for that program. The amount is $10,000. The rest, there are no grants to support that. We're hoping to grow that program, but it's been slow in doing that. So that is one where we could reduce expenses without really affecting revenue. We also have a couple of different diabetes prevention and diabetes treatment programs that are of the same. They have very little funding from grants, and we hope to grow those programs and generate some revenue based on fees. So that's another one that would fall within that category that we're looking at very closely. We, we balance between the need for the community and what we need to ask the Commissioners for to support that program.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Then I will call for public comment. Ms. White, did you have anything to?
Yes, I would like to say something. Thank you. Yeah, this was really an informative session. I just want to say I'm speaking for myself as a resident of Cootney County and Hayden. I don't always attend the meetings or make public comment, but I do watch the meetings and try to stay informed. So first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for your care for the community and also for your public comment time. I know you don't always have public comments, but you do allow that time, and I appreciate that. So just personally, I'd like to see more information and transparency on the Panhandle Health website. The last meeting agenda said the meeting started at 12:00. So I don't know if that was a mistake or if there's been a change in the start times, but the start time is not listed on the website. So I would just personally like to see that more pronounced. Also, you used to include attachments with your agendas, but I don't see that anymore. And like in our last meeting, you had a resolution, and you also had a budget, but I didn't see attachments for any of those. So it's kind of hard to follow what's going on in the meeting or what you're talking about without that available. I would also like to request, if you could put email addresses for the trustees or a way to contact them. way to contact them on the website, I don't see that really clear, and also a stop for information requests. I did send in a couple of requests, or one, I sent one in in January and didn't get a response, I sent it to the info page. And just for your information, there's a few broken links on your website, too, the ones going to the public health districts in the meeting notice archives, those are broken. Glad to bring those things to your attention, and, and thanks again for all that you're doing for our community.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to mention that the last meeting, I didn't see it posted when I checked the evening before, so I was just wondering when you usually post the agendas. So, thank you, that's all.
Anybody else on the line? Anybody there? Nope, okay. 9:30 meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you so much for your time.